To order?
Yeah.
And we have everybody here but Ashley. And, um, any additions to the agenda?
None.
In addition to agenda, um, I have a motion to, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make that motion.
Motion from Rick, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. A second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Got to do roll call.
Oh yeah, I keep forgetting that. So do the roll call, Matt.
Here we go, Anderson is absent right now. Jake?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Agenda is approved.
Okay, so we have nobody here for public comment. Um, the consent agenda, um, you all had that to look at, it's got the minutes in it. Um, maybe we do Cheryl, can you give us a little bit on the treasures report?
Um, I did go in and look at the bills. Um, one thing that was notable was all of the refunds for the Disney trip. That was kind of a bummer, too bad that the kids couldn't make that. Um, other than that, it was pretty much, um, business as usual, some construction costs coming out as things are going on. If you go out there at all, it's, everything's moving, it's great, other than that, pretty much the same as normal.
Cheryl, can you just say, go over the first thing, um, you kind of cut out at the beginning, if you could just go over the very first thing you mentioned?
Uh, the Disney trip. The Disney trip refunds was the big, big thing I really noticed, there were a lot of them, and it made me sad that the kids can't go on that trip. But it is what it is.
Thank you Cheryl.
Okay, so we'll have the consent agenda. Go ahead Rick.
I'd like to just remove C two for further discussion.
So noted.
Okay. Okay, so we have the consent agenda, looking for a motion on the approval of the consent agenda, less C two.
I'll make a motion to prove the consent.
Have a mo- motion from Maggie?
I'll second.
A second from Thomas? Any further discussion? Matt, we're ready for the roll call.
All right Jake?
Aye.
Uh, Rick?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Okay, so the next item then will be, um, C two. Um, we're looking for a motion to approve C two.
I'll make a motion to approve C two.
Make a motion from Maggie, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, is that Thomas? Second from Thomas. Um, any further discussion?
Okay, I just have a couple of thoughts. First of all, I have a question, my question, is the administration really committed to Coach Heimerman over the long haul? Um, or is this just a stopgap measure until we find someone else? And the reason I'm asking, I support Jake, but I don't support this if this is just for a year or two until someone else comes up. Um, I just find it strange that someone who was asked to be relieved of his duties two years ago is now being brought back to, um, take a similar position. And I'm just a reminder to the board that as of the last 20 years, the average tenure of a boys or girls basketball coach is under three years. And as I've said, two years ago, we've got to stop this revolving door, it's not fair to the kids. And I just want to know that administration is committed to him over the long haul, that we're not going to be back in two or three years looking for another girls' coach, and that he's going to be given free rein to coach the girls without having to worry about looking over his shoulder all the time to see if the administration is supporting him or not. Um, so that's a question I would have for the administration, is this for the long term now? Um, are we committed to Jake? Um, it just seems like, and I, I don't know how many other people applied for this job, I don't know what the procedure was, but, um, I think Jake will do a good job, but I just want to make sure that administration's got his back and that he's going to be around for a while.
So can I interject for a moment?
Sure.
So when we have a, an item removed from the consent agenda, there's a certain amount of discussion that can take place, but it's not like normal discussion. And I don't have the detail on that necessarily.
Right.
But.
Yeah, but I, I think I can respond to some of Rick's questions, and I, Rick, I, I think the questions that you're asking are fair questions, and I think they're, they're good questions to, to bring up and, and talk about. Um, what I can tell you about where is the administration at, I would say that, um, Coach Heimerman has the, the same level of commitment from the administration as every other coach that we employ. Um, absolutely do we want to have all of our coaches have long tenures with lots of consistency and develop really robust programs that not only are successful on the court, field, wherever they compete, but also all of those intangible things, those life lessons that we look for from extracurriculars, absolutely. Does the administration have a crystal ball, or does the school district have a crystal ball, and can we guarantee that? Unfortunately, Rick, I can't. So what I can tell you is that yes, he absolutely has the, um, administration's backing, the recommendation wouldn't be here if he didn't. Um, but if you're asking me to make a guarantee for you that this is going to be a 10, 12, 15, 25, 40-year commitment, I, I don't have that ability, and I, I don't think anybody does. Um, so I think we, we have a, a good recommendation in front of the board tonight. The only reason it's here is because it has my 100% support, and, um, I would recommend that the board approve it.
Okay. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready for the roll call.
Okay, Jake?
Aye.
Rick? Rick, I didn't hear you.
Sorry.
You're. Thank you. Uh, Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Motion pass. Okay, so then we're going to move on then to communication items, and Matt, I'll roll this right back to you.
Okay, so I, the first one is, I just want to touch base with the facility project. Uh, Monday morning, we did receive our full building. Which is good. Up to this point, what we have been working on is a, a building permit, but it was for demolition only, and so, um, now having that full building permit, uh, approved by the state, you will see an uptick in the number of crews that are around the, the secondary building and the elementary school, um, in the coming weeks. Um, so that's good news. I just also wanted to note that the, uh, facility project continues to go as planned. Um, you know, that's, it's always the beginning is always the, the nervous part, because it seems like if there are budget issues or something that comes up, it, it generally is closer to the beginning of the project than towards the end. Um, so it's been good news and everything is going as planned with the facility project. Um, the Reserve Center is also going to, the board's going to officially, uh, award that contract tonight, but that is also in the works and here probably in the next, oh, uh, two to three weeks. Um, the community will see that the Reserve Center will also be, be coming down and, and that site will be graded, um, in order to use for some athletic competitions. Um, administrative team is diligently working right now on planning for fall. I'm sure some of you took in the two o'clock press conference last week. Um, I'm, I'm anticipating that you were probably looking for the silver lining that I was as well. And, uh, I'm not quite sure what exactly was accomplished in that press conference, there really was no new information. Those, uh, the, the request of the Department of Education to ask school districts to plan for either in-person classes, distance learning classes, or a hybrid combination of the two, that has been, um, in the works now for close to four months. So that was not new information, that's something that districts are continuing to work on, and, and Painesville will continue to work on that. I do just want to make sure that the board understands, um, I have a very strong commitment to somehow, in some capacity, having students back in our buildings. I am very hopeful that that means we will be able to do in-person classes. We can work with families if they are concerned about sending their son or daughter to school because of in-person classes. I think we can come up with a system that can meet those needs, um, and we have some ability to do online, to do distance learning. But I am really hopeful that there will be a green light for us to have in-person classes, and would really welcome the opportunity to be able to put all of our options out to our families and, and really make this more of a, a student-centered, um, program, and, and I'm hopeful that MDE is going to, to see that and, and share that, that same belief. So more to come, but no administrative team is diligently working on that. Um, as soon as we have some draft plans, we are going to start communicating those out to employees. July 14th will be our next board meeting, and at that board meeting, the board will also see all three of those, uh, plans as well. And, uh, we will move forward from there. So at least July 14th and the August work session, probably plan on having the fall 2020 will probably be agenda items at both of those meetings coming up.
I have a question about some of the planning, just so, just for your information, when those, um, preseason areas are being planned, how involved are the teachers, is that more of administration? But how, how is there feedback coming into that plan?
So at this point, it is more administrative with putting together what we have for space and what we physically can offer. And then once we have a grasp on what that looks like, then I think it's time to roll out, now that we have kind of the, the parameters are set up, then we'll roll it out to, um, faculty members, to staff, and, and, um, all employees to be able to, to fine tune and, and make those, those modifications.
Probably after the July 14th.
Yeah, and, and I think realistically, you're probably looking towards the end of July, when MDE actually makes the announcement about what it is, then I think we can move to that next step of, of fine tuning a plan that we know is going to be in, in, um, alignment with what MDE and Department of Health are looking for. Okay?
Thank you.
Um, the last thing, I just wanted to touch base with the board, so, um, next week will be the last, uh, the last week of June, first part of July. Um, so I'll have some updated numbers as far as what June meal distribution looks like. Um, we did make the decision to go ahead with satellite, uh, meal distributions like we ended the school year in. Um, when that started, once school got out, uh, that week of June 8th, we were, uh, serving about 800 or so meals a day, between seven and 800 meals a day is what we were, um, putting out, uh, at those satellite locations. Um, so at the end of June here, I'm going to, um, pull our numbers that have been submitted for reimbursement as far as breakfast and lunches served. And I'll get that information out to people, so you guys can take a look at it. Um, but I do anticipate it's probably going to be in that seven to eight hundred meals a day is, is probably where we're gonna, gonna fall. Um, which is what, uh, is good, uh, I, we were budgeting, I think we needed about 560 meals a day is what we were hoping for when we did the kind of budget scenario for it. Um, so it's, it should be in good shape, but, um, look for that next week as, as the month of June ends up. Those are the three items I had, does anybody have questions for me? Otherwise, Maggie, can you talk a little bit about the city township school collaborative meeting?
Sure, um, I attended that last Thursday, um, the township, uh, there weren't any representatives there, so the city provided some updates and, um, they talked about the DMV and that, um, just like as it comes to our students, especially as they're trying to take tests that they are not open for that, you need to do that on ThinkCloud. Um, and they also won't take any, um, appointments over the phone, so just heads up to parents that as your son or daughter are working through those tests, you might be standing in line for some hours, or, um, you have to do it online. Um, the other question that got brought up, reimbursed at the school is there was, um, conversation at one point about the Safe Road to School, and that if we want to participate in that, then a study would need to be done. Um, and partially by doing some of that work, I believe then it would help, like, identify areas where we would potentially need, um, certain crossings or things like that, so that's something that I said that you would follow up with in mind to see, um, if we want to participate in that. Um, the city administrator position will be posted in the beginning of July. Um, and then we kind of talked about some of the bigger, like, projects, like, for example, the library, so, um, they hope to expand in the future and just ask, like, what would this district's, like, partnership want to be in that, would we want to? And I spoke on behalf of myself, I didn't, you know, but I'm like, I, I would think definitely we'd want to be a part of that conversation. Um, and so it wasn't like they're starting a task force, they would like to bring that up at the October meeting to start figuring out how do we start to be involved in these conversations, not that it just happens at a meeting and, oh, what are your thoughts? But that we can really truly work together on some of these bigger projects. Um, let's see. Other thing they talked about were just some of the bigger projects, um, building projects went on in Painesville. The senior housing facility is tentatively planned, is a four-story building with a second base, um, that would be a nursing home. And there's another 24 units that are going up, um, I think soonish. And so with that, um, they shared that we finally went over 2,500 in our population, uh, which is a good thing. And Jeff wasn't at the meeting, but, um, there was a note from him for, again, partnership within our school, like, how do we bring more people, you know, to our community, and definitely we want to be involved in that conversation, as it's important that we grow our schools. Um, it has to be a partnership with our community, like, how do we all work together? And I heard, you know, I think Matt and our administration is doing a great job on reaching our people, they're doing podcasts. We're doing way more on social media than ever before, we're on Twitter, we're on Facebook. Um, things are, I think are being shared at a greater level, and I said, like, that has to continue to happen, and I think that's often the biggest problem, is that people don't know what's going on, we don't know what's going on this or at the city, or people with the school, it's in the paper, and it's just not good enough. Um, so I'm excited that they're in conversations about that, and I think there's a good model here at the school, what we're doing. Um, it felt like the energy in the room was really positive about the school, the direction we're going, you know, talking of, of questions around about distance learning and how did that go? And I think everybody was pleased to hear, you know, reports back from the administration that in comparison to our local kind of districts, we didn't have as many challenges. And we were able to provide hotspots for our students, that wasn't a big issue like it is in some districts. No, that doesn't mean they didn't have issues with the hotspot, or having access, and everybody's experience was different. Um, and some of the questions they asked were like, well, what did parents think, and how did that go, and that's hard to answer. It's, it's different for each student, I said, but the one thing like I personally have heard in common is, even if it was like, my son or daughter didn't learn as much, or it was great, the one thing in common was they felt the school supported their, their child. And that was a common thing, and I think in a time like this, um, the social and emotional wellness of our students is evident, hopefully to our community, so even if it wasn't, which we know a perfect system. Um, so we talked through some of that, and, um, had questions on what's going to happen to follow the same thing we had just had at two o'clock. Don't know, um, there was no answers in that two o'clock, um, session. So more to come, October, the hope is that we can actually start putting some things in the works for whether it's going to be task force, let things move forward, because I, my hope is that we don't just keep talking, things actually have to, like, set a date, set a meeting, plan one, plan two, um, what are we doing? But I think those will to be the two biggest opportunities, the library and then talking about how do we really work together to draw more people to our community.
Do we stop Paige on?
Paige is, I think Paige might be having some technical issues. Paige, can you hear me? I can't see you, but, um, can you hear me, and do you have anything for the student perspective?
No, I don't have anything.
Thanks Paige.
Okay, we have nothing for old business, new business, the 2021 budget.
Okay, so the, the budget that is included, um, I feel like we've, we've kind of talked about this at, at length a little bit. So you will see that there is a, we are projecting a $53,469, uh, budget surplus. Uh, the reason that that is now in the positive is because of the stimulus money. So we are receiving the CARES money, yep, so we will be receiving just shy of $95,000, um, for stimulus dollars. Uh, we will be using that dollar, those dollars to offset some of the expenditures that we did not, um, couldn't plan for with the COVID situation, particularly increased cost to hotspots, um, increased, uh, meal storage, uh, equipment for the satellite locations. Um, the other thing that has to happen, and I've talked with Matt Dickhausen at length about this, um, but the district is going to support community ed, they are going to come up about $100,000 short for 1920, uh, due to the inability to collect fees for service, um, programs from essentially the middle of March until now, I mean, just very recently. So, um, he's got about $100,000 deficit that he's concerned about, so I, I do believe the district is going to be looking to help out with about $65,000 of that. So when you factor all of that out and you start look, looking at making that fund transfer to Fund Four, that $53,000 realistically is probably closer to about a $12,000 deficit, because we are probably going to send $65,000 over to Fund Four to help Matt subsidize his, um, his loss that, that he had. Um, all in all, again, this is a preliminary budget. It's all dependent upon our student enrollment, it's all dependent upon, um, what happens with actual attendance for 2021. Uh, we did just have a new family enroll in Painesville for the upcoming school year, so I know that we have two more students than we budgeted for, uh, in the spring. So that's, that's a, a step in the right direction anyway, and that obviously will drive this real bottom line of where this budget comes in. Um, in my mind, I'm calling it very close to a balanced budget. Um, it includes all of the projects we've talked about up to this point, there's no changes in any of that. The only change is that first, um, line item, Fund One, general unassigned, um, that number changed because of the CARES money. Questions on the budget?
Okay, there's no questions, um, we're looking for a motion to the, approve the preliminary 2021 budget as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a motion? A motion from Rick? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl? And, um, any discussion? Any discussion? Hey, hey Matt?
Roll call. Uh, Jake?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, then next is the membership, um, contracts action, and it looks like all of these are things we've been involved with before, but Matt, I'll leave it to you for explanation.
Yep, Minnesota School Board Association, I just wouldn't recommend a district not be a part of that. Um, we were a member last year, I would recommend we continue. Uh, their, uh, fee went up, I, I think it was like $98 or something is, is what the difference was, it's right around a hundred bucks. Um, Minnesota State High School League, again, if we want to have activities, uh, we really don't have much of a choice, so I would recommend that we, uh, join the Minnesota State High School League. Resource Training and Solutions, um, they helped us out last year with a variety of, uh, professional development. I would, uh, suggest we keep them on. Um, we are also going to move some of our, uh, facility management contracts with them too, as soon as our existing contract expires at the end of the 2021 school year. Um, so I would, I would recommend that one's, uh, be supported. And then Schools for Equity and Education, um, that is a lobbying group that really deals with, uh, school districts that really kind of meet our profile and, and their whole, uh, drive is to make sure that the state has an equitable, uh, funding formula, and right now there are a lot of inequities. So I would, uh, recommend that we continue our membership with, with that group as well. All of these we have been a part of in the past, and I would recommend we continue them.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the memberships for the 2021 school year as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Cheryl? I'll be a second. Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? None, Matt?
Jake?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yes. Okay, then we're on, uh, Glacial Lakes Adult Basic Education Consortium, Matt, back to you.
So this is an annual, uh, membership that the district participates in, um, Painesville area schools, we do not have a large enough concentration of, of users for adult basic ed for us to have our own adult basic ed program. So we partnership, uh, partner with this consortium, the Glacial Lakes Adult Basic Ed Consortium. Uh, this is what allows community ed to run adult basic ed and have access to the funding that the state provides to, um, districts to provide adult basic education services.
Just a question, why isn't that under the membership contracts? Why do we go on that one separately?
That is a really good question.
I don't, I didn't know if it was like a fun, like.
I don't know that it's a, a membership, it's more of a.
Yeah.
Probably could be.
It, it's not like we're actually getting service from them.
Okay.
But this Glacial Lakes Adult Basic Ed is where all of these districts, ABE money from the state goes, and then the consortium turns around and distributes it to the, to the member districts. Um, but Matt Dickhausen, for instance, he runs all of our adult basic ed through community ed. Um, Jay Thompson is a instructor that he uses regularly and stuff. Um, so, eh, yeah, good question, I don't really know the answer to it. But yeah, yeah, the districts that I've been a part of that have been a, a part of this consortium, it has always been a standalone, either June or July, um, agenda item.
Is it because it requires board member signatures maybe?
Could be, yeah, I'm not sure.
There was a time we took all the dues as separate line items. Yeah, we're sitting there doing motions and seconds, and we're blue and pink over the same thing. So do we have a motion to approve the Glacial Lakes Adult Basic Education Agreement as presented?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Maggie?
I can second.
Do we have a second?
Thomas, second.
Second from Thomas? Any further? What was that, Thomas? Um, any further discussion?
Yeah, we're good. I missed something, nope, okay, roll call? Roll call. Jake?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then we move to the reservation, or the Reserve Center demolition bids.
Yep, so we've received two bids, uh, to, uh, demolish the Reserve Center. Um, and just for the board's reference, we will be, it's my recommendation to approve the VAS, um, bid, and we will be including the $10,000 option, because we do want to have that eventually be a practice area. It actually will be the place where seventh and eighth grade football games most likely will be played. Um, so we do want to have that graded, uh, laser graded and get actual grass going in there. Um, so the $10,000 add would be on there, so the total value of the contract would be $58,000 is what the total value would be. Uh, the other bid that we received, they did not, uh, give us anything as far as a, a bid to go and, and do any sort of, athletic field grading or anything like that. Um, and obviously that bid's higher than, than the, the VAS bid with that add on it, so, uh, be my recommendation to approve the VAS bid.
So I'll make the motion to approve the bid to demolish the Painesville Reserve Center from VAS Plumbing and Heating for $58,000. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Maggie? Any further discussion?
Uh, just a question? Where, uh, just where does this come out of the budget now? Is this out of Fund Six?
Well, so this, yep, so this actually, there's $100,000 left from the old bond proceeds that were, um, set aside for the Reserve Center. Originally, I believe, um, Mr. Hewitt thought that there would actually have to be some sort of payout in order to, to do something with that, so there was $100,000 set aside for that. And that's what, where this money is actually going to come from. So the $58,000 for this work, and then the other piece that's going to probably come out of there potentially is the asbestos removal. I'm still investigating the most efficient way to pay for all of the asbestos removal, if it's going that route or putting it in the project or doing some other things. But right now, this $58,000 will be from that $100,000 that was set aside previously.
So I have a question to follow up with that. So in there it says no people's responsible for hazardous materials, which I'm sure they, it's just. So I have a question to follow up with that. So in there, it says no, people's responsible for hazardous materials, which I'm sure they, it's just, it can trash hold. Then to put in there, do you have any concerns with asbestos that any of the soil or anything that they'll? Or do you think like removing that will be done and we won't have to?
Nope. So the one really good thing about it being a reserve center is the military tends to keep really detailed records. And so when they actually went through the process of decommissioning that building and not using it anymore, they, uh, removed an old fuel tank out. And then they also did a bunch of, um, soil site testing. So we are relatively confident
Okay.
that what is the, the real issue is the asbestos, which we knew, um, was going to need to be taken out. Um, but the rest of it is, I believe, a pretty clean site. Um, obviously, yes, once they have that hole in the ground open and stuff, there'll be a process we have to go through to get that soil tested and, and make sure. So obviously we won't know the full extent until it's really done. Um, but I think we're in really good shape with it.
Okay.
Yep. Anything else on the reserve center? Any other questions?
We need the roll call.
Okay. We will do roll call. Um, Ashley?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, yeah, yeah, I.
Thank you. Jake?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, then we have. Passed. Then we have upcoming meetings.
Okay, uh, upcoming meetings, I just want to make sure the board, uh, July 14th, it's our only July meeting. Um, we are planning on having that a in-person meeting, so we will be back. Um, either in the boardroom or the seminar room. Right now, we're just going to keep it at 6:00 PM in the secondary school boardroom. If we need to change it to the seminar room in order to accommodate social distancing, we will get that announcement out in the timely manner that it needs to go out and to the appropriate people. And an email will go out to board members as well. But please mark your calendars, July 14th, uh, come back to the secondary school so we can meet in person.
Okay?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move the board to now adjourn.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? Okay, Ashley?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Rick?
We just lost Rick.
Rick, okay, Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.